Okay, 6:10. Chris Codius is not available. He's having a problem getting a flight back from a work posting and so I guess I'll chair the meeting. Any adjustments to the select board agenda? Okay. We're approving the bills. And, oh, here are the minutes.
I would like to request a moment of silence for one of our long-term residents that passed away. And she was the town clerk and she was also an auditor that I know of right now. I gotta do research on it. And that's Lenora Thompson.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. She was an auditor back in the day when every penny was counted.
She was the chair auditor when I audited back in 1984. She's the one that taught me to audit.
Yeah. I didn't know she was there.
How old was she?
Um, late 80s.
Great painter, too.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody probably has a piece, right?
I have many. I have many.
Skip?
Also, she was the 911 coordinator.
That's right, the first 911 coordinator. Yeah.
And she assigned actual persons' names to the available structures.
Uh-huh. Which...
Which I don't.
Yeah, to take those off. Yeah, she probably knew where everybody lived, so that made it...
When did that happen, recently?
November 7th.
Oh, so a week ago.
We used to see a cross-country scheme at her place.
Yes.
And she was working at the golf course this summer. I know she talked to Ron a couple of times. Anything else before we get to the town clerk's report? Okay. Town clerk's report.
I have got Radio Norm.
Oh, great. I wondered what...I couldn't figure out what happened to that.
Paul Smooty had brought it into me. It was originally mailed to Paul in Norm at the fire department.
Right.
And he brought it in to me and I had called Chris for him to come in and sign it.
Okay.
So I don't know...
I found a note to that effect that he had...
One of you ones gonna sign it so we can fax it off tomorrow?
Thank you. Because when John Gordon sent an email today saying that he didn't know what happened to it and I didn't know what happened to it and I could find where it had been delivered by Paul, to Paul by accident and he brought it to you and then...
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, um, thank you for digging that out.
Just want signatures, good?
You can sign it too if you want, but...
Do you want me to also email a copy of that to John?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
And for me, I'd like to have one too.
I can put all the...I was gonna say all the fire members. All the select board on there, too.
Okay.
And I have been receiving on a regular basis appropriations for this coming town meeting.
Oh, great.
We've gotten a lot of those in so far.
I'm sorry, can...what did we just sign? Was it a contract or was it a proposal?
This is a quotation.
Quotation. And how much was it for?
It is for a grand total of $3,973.
That's pretty much what we had expected. Thank you.
And recordings are still coming in on a regular basis and other than that, I don't think I have any...oh, the transportation had sent a reminder that Route 14 will be closed November 21st through the 22nd because they're replacing another culvert in East Callis.
Yeah, but that's the one that they've already got signed up for that.
Well, they had sent me this email, so...
Okay, okay, yeah, and I heard from Ask Adam today what the status was and he said that, uh, the contract has been let, SD Ireland, and they're gonna start on the 27th out here.
On November?
Yeah.
And that's a definite?
No, that's what he said.
Oh, wow.
Wednesday is 21st through the...
22nd.
26th.
Is that down by...
Tuesday and Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
And the 27th is right here, okay.
And the 27th is quite healthy.
It's when they're gonna start this big project out here.
And I think that's all I have.
Does that mean we've used the whole corridor?
No, well, you can if you want, but they're gonna set up a light.
Okay, one...
So people, you know, probably shouldn't have to wait more than, I would think, three or four minutes, but of course it depends how many people are in line, I guess. Although with a light, I guess it's timed. It doesn't probably matter how many people are in line, does it?
I thought they were making a secondary road, Diana.
Yeah, but there's still...it's only gonna be one way, one lane.
Gotcha, okay.
So the whole corridor is not gonna be...
You can use it, you know, if you want to. It's still very narrow.
Yeah.
It's been graded, but you don't wanna meet anybody.
It's very drivable.
Yeah.
If you're the only car, yeah.
And you have a truck. No, I've been up it with my car, too. But I don't like to meet anybody. It's a little narrow. But you can also go up around here if people don't wanna wait.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's not a very long wait. We'll see. We'll see.
I think that's all I have.
So reports you have balance sheet financial statement due to do from over the last three weeks. Cash receipts took in $850,000, $821.35. Current property taxes, delinquent taxes, coffees, school insurance, recording, vault, zoning, etc. Payroll, $16,629.74. Accounts payable, $2,116,952.49.
Say that again, $2 million? And that is because you paid the school?
That is because I cut the school check.
Yeah.
I transferred $890,000 from the checking over into the money market. So we gotta backtrack a little bit. The fuel contract, it was never signed the night we approved it.
Oh.
So if we can get...I can get a signature on that.
Go ahead, say it.
This came in with a tax bill. Normally I get a smiley face sometimes, but it wasn't a smiley face.
What was it?
You're trying to say thank you. Hmm, it didn't get worse by the day. Oh.
I think it's sarcastic.
Okay.
For a minute, I was like, oh, that's so nice.
Hmm. Hmm, hmm, yeah. You're welcome.
Moving on.
No comment.
So, annual contract with our town report. I took on a two-year contract reducing our costs by much.
And that was...
And it's through Repo who we've done the last few years and we're very happy. John Reed is very happy with them. So I did sign a two-year contract with them. BLCT update about the office claim. I will read it and then I will hand it over to you guys to just review. So at this point, I can issue payment of 80% of the building damages and once we have the quotes to review, we can pay the difference. I can issue the full amount of content loss. This breakdown...
Did you...when you say I can issue, you mean the person who's writing that?
Who's doing our claim, taking care of our claim.
Okay, she's saying that.
So there's just a couple things he wanted answered today and so, yeah, so it's still in the play. So there may be...I don't wanna say the money amount unless it goes up or down or...but that's where we're at with that. So it's not finalized through BLCT yet. Other things...
When it is, you'll send us a...
Oh, yes.
Copy?
Yeah, or make sure that you guys are happy with what they have.
Mm-hmm.
And then Skip is...whatever's left over or the deductible...
Then the FEMA team will...
Will take over. Wearing a different hat as the delinquent tax collector, my warrant to myself, $186,031.95 that went delinquent. You can put that one out. Health insurance, they're wanting new...to sign the new contracts. MVP is going up, so I did get a quote from Lacrosse Bull Shield also. That was more expensive, but we can do that when hopefully we have a couple extra meetings for budgeting.
Mm-hmm.
And I would love for you guys to have an extra meeting to finish the personnel policy. Please.
An extra meeting as in not at a regular meeting? I know, right?
Because it's been dragging.
I know, yeah.
So where I know that some things are gonna come up about employees that want change and I'm not changing until that policy is changed.
So they're asking for different benefits or...
I'm not gonna speak on that.
Okay.
So it's just, I'm not budging unless...and it's not gonna be...it's not fair to who comes into office either saying, oh, yeah, you get to do that because whatever, you don't have to stick to the policy. And I am sticking to the policy.
Because as of right now, we only got one meeting in December.
You're kidding me?
Because the second one would be Christmas.
Well, we could always juggle that, yeah.
We gotta do the week before.
Well, we'd go into the new year with a fresh, new employee policy. That'd be good, right?
It would be awesome.
Well, we gotta...I mean, I, you know, I think we should have a couple of budget meetings in December. They don't have to be at our regular meetings, but they can be, you know, other times. We'll arrange it when it fits Chris's schedule.
Brandy, do you wanna talk about this a little bit more right now?
No, I just wanted to update you.
Okay.
Those are the numbers we're looking at right now, but again, he wanted some questions answered about the basement. So hopefully I'll be getting money soon. If it's not all of it, it'll just be 80% until everything's finalized.
Got it.
They did ask if we had ordered or had cleaners come in, so I'd like to jump on the gun for that one.
Okay, I will get hold of Paul and Hardwick.
I can see the logo, but I can't...
Paul Davis.
Paul Davis, yeah.
I'll call them tomorrow.
So, hmm, this looks...this doesn't look like very much compared to the last one I saw.
It is actually more than the last one.
Okay, oh, wait, here's another one. Yeah, a little more, hmm. Okay. Wanna give this back to her or...
You guys can keep it if you want to.
Okay.
I have...it's on my email. If I have anything more, and I can forward you...
Yeah, if you could send me that, that'd be good.
Goodies. So, yeah, the budgeting, the health insurance will be in there before I sign this and get it back to them, but they want this as of December 1st.
Who wants?
MVP to sign a new contract for health insurance. Where they're gonna have to pay more, we're gonna have to pay more, so, yeah, it's...we'll review that then. Other goodies? Other goodies? Yeah, money's really slowed down.
Hmm, no.
I wish it hadn't, but I have to then decide if I have another tax sale.
How does a delinquency compare to last year, what went?
That's a good question. I have not...I didn't look back on that.
Okay, just be interesting to see how, you know, economically things are going for people. Oh, we both get to sign this one.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Get Robin to scan it for me so I can send it to Claire. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Can I just, like, take a time out and just go peek at the door?
Oh, please, yeah.
Right back.
Hello?
Hmm.
Oh, I see, is that kid's tongue stuck to the wall?
Old movies and justice.
I can remember the name of the kid who did that when I was walking to Brook Street School back in the day, but I'm not gonna say it. He's probably still alive.
Is it marked up there?
No. Sorry. Hmm. How much snow is there?
Ah, dusting at this point.
Oh, okay.
He wasn't supposed to go to the truck without telling me first, but of course he did.
So he's in the truck?
Yes.
Okay, that's probably best. As long as he doesn't have the keys.
Uh, actually, he does, but he won't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, I guess we're gonna skip right over Mr. Larrabee and hear from Skip Lindsay.
So on the agenda, I believe there are one, two, three, four, four items, and those four items are approved or not, the purchases, radar speeds up. So in the handout, I think you have Lindsay and Diana right in front of you have dropped off. I have two folders on here as well.
Was it same as this one?
This one? Over here. So if you look at my email date is November 8th, that would be on the top of the first package. The morning, please add these items to your meeting on November 13th as you see fit to do so. So the second page is the purchase order for the speed radar sign.
I make a motion that we approve that.
I'll second that motion and I know that Chris was also in favor.
Yeah, he did send a phone...email.
So I cannot order that. Someone other than a member of the public has to order that, whoever that is.
Okay.
So what will happen to the old sign?
The old sign is toast.
About can we take it and get scrap metal price for it?
There might be some metal in there.
Hopefully the guy who picks it, who brings the old one, will take the...brings the new one, will take the old one maybe for parts or something.
Yeah. So, and Traffic Logits, this guy Mark Gregory is queued up, so he'd be appreciative of a signed purchase order and he could get that anywhere in town within two weeks.
Okay.
To give it to the garage.
So, we need to sign something here? Call him or what?
You're gonna call, right, Brandy?
Oh, okay.
And then who has to sign the purchase order or who has to do that?
I think the select board's gotta approve it.
Yeah, they can just approve the purchase order and then Brandy can call them in.
So just the minutes, you know, the minutes will stay there.
But you're not gonna get the minutes for a while.
Five days.
What?
Five days.
Yeah, right, okay.
Statue.
That's state statute.
Yeah, right, yeah, okay. Like I don't have anything else to do.
So anyhow, thank you for approving that.
Then who will install it?
Well, I'm having difficulty finding an installer. Folks who installed the other four, the original four, called Lafayette Specialties, they're listed, and I don't believe they wanna come down here just to install one sign, but I'm still working on it. And I don't believe the road crew would want to install it. Maybe they do. Well, you need a permit, however, to work on Route 14, so that's something we have to keep in our back pocket.
The post is still there, right?
Yes.
The post is fine, it's just the sign itself.
The sign and the solar array.
Solar.
So this'll come pre-programmed for 40 miles an hour. So I have the install instructions, but anyhow.
We can do that.
You think?
Yeah. Especially if it's pre-programmed. That would be my challenge, would be programming it, but if it's programmed already, it's just nuts and bolts.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, nuts and bolts and make sure the solar panel is arrayed properly, the solar array is aligned properly. So it gets the most amount of sunlight. That's about it.
What?
That's about it.
That's about it?
In the installation, yeah.
We can do that.
There's no wire? No, it's not hooked or anything?
It just plugs into one of the...
Oh.
Great. It's that easy.
And it's spec'd the same, it has data collection and recording, so if we want to download how many cars are exceeding the 40 mile an hour limit or not...
Does it take a picture?
It won't do, no.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, imagine the ACLU coming after us, what they're doing with the pictures. So second on the list, approve and approve the repairs to County Road Extension. So that in the package is the Excel spreadsheet and it shows a total of $37,052.84. And that cost was derived during a meeting with Alfie and Danielle and Laura where we ascertained how much material we're gonna need, the labor and the type of equipment that'll be used to complete the repairs. So that's in the grants portal as a damage inventory and I'll get to that later on.
But we're not planning to do that till next year, right?
I was waiting to see what the board thought about that.
Really?
Whether we were gonna fix it or not fix it.
In terms of cost, you know, right now as it sits, we can get 80...what is it, 87.5% between FEMA and the state.
Well, you saw the email that I got from Ben Rose, right?
Yeah, I'll get into that, too. So right now, from all the information I have, that's ironclad and not looking forward to if this happens or if that happens, we would be able to get 87.5% of that cost. However, if what Ben Rose said is true, we might be able to get close to 95%. But two things have to happen. The president has to declare the disaster has...cost of the disaster has increased to $200 million or something like that. And one other thing has to occur. So now whether or not that can occur is, you know, up to speculation. It may or may not occur.
I thought he said that the trigger was like $111,000,000.
$111,000,000.
And he thinks it'll far exceed that for the state.
Right, he thinks, yeah, but that's okay. That's okay, but I just deal with...
I mean, they don't have a lot of...probably, they don't have a lot of numbers from us. They probably are missing a lot of numbers from other towns, too.
Well, they probably have our numbers now.
Okay.
Because they can get into the FEMA grants portal and so they know we have damage inventories in there, I think 62 totaling, and I'll get into that later. But anyhow, you know, our numbers are there. So the absolutes that I know now, we can get 87.5%. Whether or not those two items occur, you know, still speculation. It'd be great if that happened, you know, it would just...we'd have to be on the hook for 5%.
Better than 100%, being on the hook for it.
Oh, that's true, yeah. And so this is a placeholder again. We had to, and I'll get into this next, we had to get all our damage inventories up into the portal on time and we did that. So this is a placeholder like other things are, like the town offices, just to have it there. And, you know, we don't have to ask FEMA to assign a project to any of these damage inventories if the board chooses not to go through with it, you know, the permanent repairs.
But we didn't have to approve all the other projects that got done.
That who's done?
That the town has done, that they've been working on all summer.
Right.
I mean, I don't mind doing it, but it's just...
Well, I guess...
I don't know what the distinction is.
Well, the distinction is that extension, I don't know, was a contentious item, whether or not folks wanted to even repair that. That's the only contention I heard.
I didn't hear anybody speak against it, or...
I felt like there was...maybe it wasn't directly stated, but I felt like it got brought up and it seemed like it...it didn't seem like everybody was 100% on board, but I am. Can I make a motion to approve the repairs or is this not the right time for that?
Well, if you want to do that, that's fine.
Okay. That's...we are doing that today, right? Or did you wanna wait?
Yeah, I really, I really thought that it was gonna be much, much more than that because I thought all that stuff had come down into the road until I talked to Mark Sassy and he said, no, most of that stuff that came down the mountain is still on his property. Didn't come into the road.
What I saw was not a slide.
Yeah.
Not a landslide. It's a washout.
Oh.
So one of the, one of the brooks jumped out of where it's supposed to be and washed the road out. So it's not a slide, it's a washout.
Oh.
It's not a minor washout, mind you, but it's, but it's, it's not a slide.
Thank you for putting up the road closed sign.
Yes, yeah, no, I think that's a good idea for the hunters and all the people that might be...
Yeah, Mark said he's already pulled four people out of there.
Jeez.
So what do you think about when it could be done?
Well, I still have the rental excavator. I mean, I don't know if I can complete it before snow flies. I mean, it's anybody's guess. It's snowing right now, so it's...but it is this week, it's supposed to be in the 50s, so I can certainly make an attempt.
Everything else is... Everything else is done?
Uh, we're still, we're working on our sand pile. We've got a little more of that to do.
What do you mean, all your flood-related work?
I believe so. Yes, I believe so. Certainly, all the main drives, all the main roads are up to the snow. So, I can, I mean, that's sort of the last one that I know of that's not complete. I'm assuming there's probably other class fours that we haven't, that hasn't been brought to our attention. But that's sort of the last one on my radar.
It's the one that people use. People do use it some, right?
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking is maybe, maybe if we run out of time, maybe it's just fill in and get the brook back where it's supposed to be. Kind of fill in the road a little bit so at least this snow machine can get through there safely. Might not get it completely filled back the way it was so that, you know, a sedan can get through. But maybe, you know, to get it so it's travelable for either a four-wheel-drive truck or, or like you said, a snow machine. And that I can just do with the excavator without hauling a bunch of stuff in.
Tom, how much longer do you have the excavator?
As long as we want it.
I mean, it's got month by month, right?
Yeah. Uh, yes, I mean, they'll charge us accordingly if it's halfway through the month or whatever, they'll charge us accordingly. But I believe we did get a bill, right, for another, for another month. And I asked Brandy to wait on paying that until tonight's meeting so we could decide whether we wanna try to tackle that. I mean, it seems like it's better to try to fit it in now than in the middle of spring when we're doing mud season. I mean, we're gonna have a lot of actual summer work that we didn't get to this year for next year. So, I think, I'm willing to try, to try to get it, get it passable, get it open this fall.
The only reservation that Chris had was those conversations here and there about whether or not FEMA's gonna cover class four roads, but...
They have the information from the orange book and they have a budget item that says class four roads. I have it here somewhere. And it also shows an expenditure of fixing some of the class four roads. So, we have it as part of, you know, E-Trans saying that you have to work on class four roads. And also, we have expenditures indicating that we have worked on class four roads. So, that's all they need.
So, they have, so that's enough, could be enough for them? Good.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? Um, so, the $37,000 number, I think it was 37,000. That's to make it passable for like any vehicle, right? But then you're saying that with the excavator, without bringing any material in, you can get it so a truck could get through? And that would be significantly less expensive, right?
Yeah, so that, it would only be machine time. I mean, that 37,000 came, came by measuring and figuring yardage and also sort of comparing the damage was similar to... What's the other load?
What you want, an old quarry or nickel ledge?
Eagle ledge.
Oh, nickel ledge.
Nickel ledge.
Nickel ledge, sorry. So, it was compatible to the damage, the size of the damage and the amount of damage. So, we kind of just compared and measured and...
So, there's 20, $20,000 for material here. So, that would, if you can't get that done this year, you could continue that. I mean, eventually it'll be passable to the point where it was before the flood, right?
Right.
Not just for snowmobiles and for a little drive truck?
Well, it depends on the weather.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you know, right now it's looking like next week, this kind of, this week is nice and warm and no snow. So, I can put four days into, into it and see where we're at. I know I can't fill all those voids in four days from how many trucks I brought in, you know. But I can, I can probably get it passable. And all of that would still be kept track of, all that labor so that we could get reimbursed. And this, the 37,000 is just a placeholder. It might be 50,000. FEMA's still gonna, you know what I mean, it is what it is. At, in the end, by us keeping track of time and material.
You have 18 months to repair it, for permanent repairs. So, disaster was declared, when was it, June 20th, uh, July 20th or something like that? So, you have 18 months from that day to make permanent repair.
Do you wanna repeat your motion?
I wanna ask one more question to make sure I fully understand. So, if we didn't approve the 37,000, you could still take the excavator, smooth out what's there. It would still be reasonably passable, just not as good.
Right.
So, what we would do in that case, what we have here now is a permanent fix. So, we would step back and we would go into the FEMA grants portal and get this damage inventory and change it from a permanent repair to a temporary repair. The placeholder would still remain. The cost would be much less, I'm thinking, much less. And so, then FEMA would take a look at that and reimburse us for that temporary repair. Then we could come back as long as it's within that 18-month time span and do the permanent repair.
Oh, why, well, why would we do it that way?
Because we're running out of time and weather-wise?
Right, but we could still, we could still approve the permanent fix. FEMA is the one that's given, allowing us 18 months. That's the deadline.
And that doesn't matter if it's temporary or permanent, correct? All repairs have to be done at the end of 18 months?
Permanent repairs.
Permanent repairs.
So, what, so then your temporary repair, you have...
Go ahead.
You have how long?
Six months.
Six months. And then if you turn it into permanent, then you get another 18 months on top of that?
No. You get another year.
So, it's just 18 months total, no matter if it's temporary going into permanent or if it's just permanent?
Six months for a temporary.
So, we would change that one to a temporary.
So, we would...
Right. What we get done and then when we fix it, six months when spring comes, fix it permanently, could go back in and change it.
So, we still only have 18 months to fix it?
That's correct.
Regardless of how we do it, we have 18 months.
Right.
I don't understand doing it in two stages like that.
Well, as Brandy said, it's weather perhaps.
Well, I mean, I know you can't do it, you can't do the work right now, but to give them, tell them how much it's gonna cost totally, at least a placeholder, like you said...
Well, it's a placeholder, you know, I could go in and say...
The idea is to do a permanent repair.
I mean, if, if the weather holds out, but that's anybody's guess. I mean, if it holds out, I can, I could probably get material and put in there. I'm, I'm actually working on a deal right now that would provide us a lot of material. Fairly close by, which we could get there really quick if, if this happens. I don't, there's no guarantee, but... But that's all I'm gonna say about that right now.
I'm gonna dive in on this one. I don't understand why you would take your permanent and turn it into a temporary for six months? And then turn it back into a permanent. You're still only getting 18 months.
It'll be final then. We're only kicking backwards because we're not, if we keep it to it all. It's just the way it's bracketed.
Yeah, so temporary...
But you still only have 18 months.
That's correct. But if, but if for some reason you don't have the manpower for the permanent fix, as long as you do a temporary fix, okay, just make it passable, that's six months.
But we could still have the total in there. We could still...
So, what happens if you keep it as permanent and you get it passable in the six months? And then you have to go back next summer and finish it?
Well, what if FEMA comes to check it out?
FEMA won't pay for work that's not done.
Right.
FEMA won't pay for work that isn't being done.
But they'll pay for work that...
So, if we get, if we get the temporary fixed within the six months, they'll send us a check for it.
That's the part you were leaving out, thank you.
And then, then when we do the permanent fix, when we do the permanent fix in the 18, after the 18 or before the 18 months, then they'll pay us for the permanent fix.
But still...
We can approve that permanent fix now.
That's what I'm saying.
And just show them that we've done a temporary fix.
I think it's just the concept of fixing it.
Of fixing the road. It's not the money. You're not approving money.
Right.
You're approving whether we should fix the class four or not fix the class four.
Can I make a motion to fix the class four?
I'll second it. I'll favor...
Aye.
Then we'll move forward with County Road Extension. And whatever that sorts, sorts ought to be, you'll let me know.
I sure will. Yes, as, as soon as we get a dumping of snow or the ground freezes like around, then that's when we'll know that we're not doing a permanent.
Okay, yeah, just let me know. Cause I'll change it in the portal.
Yeah, okay.
I just have a burning question. Who's really responsible for the improvement of this? Is it FEMA or you? You say yes to the permanent fix, then it goes to FEMA and they may not say, "No, we're not gonna do it," correct?
We are being told that they will pay up to 85%.
So, I think, Carol, this is just the concept...
That's squirrely if you...
Well, we'll, we get to the discussion on the bridges on your...
Well, it's the same wording. It's the same wording in these two proposals this way.
It was just the concept, because there were some questions on whether or not they even, folks even wanted that County Road Extension fixed. So, we went ahead and said, "Okay, in case folks wanted the road fixed, this is what it'll cost, what we estimate it'll cost for the permanent fix." We uploaded that into the FEMA portal and it's there as a placeholder. Right now, it's there as a permanent fix and however long that takes. We can change it to temporary pretty simply and adjust the damage inventory accordingly just with temporary fixed dollars. And then going forward, when we do the permanent fix, we'll add permanent dollars to the damage inventory and FEMA will cut another check.
So, will FEMA, if it becomes permanent with your additional monies that were temporary, will they pay 100% at that point?
They'll pay 85, uh...
Or 95?
Yeah, it depends. Depends on things happening, but right now it's 87.5%.
So, who's responsible for the other 15, 20% of the temporary?
Taxpayers.
Taxpayers. We have no choice.
Run with it, skip, keep going.
Perhaps too much information.
It's the terminology that doesn't make sense.
Well, you're right about that.
Yeah, yeah.
And so...
So, we approved going ahead for the full thing, right?
Right. Okay. So, approve or not the permanent repairs into bridges on town on Highway 23 and 24, see to Wolf's cost estimate. So, again, this was uploaded onto the FEMA grants portal as two separate damage inventories. And we'll get into the damage inventories in the next part of the presentation. So, you know, the cost for the new bridges, according to DeWolfe, are approaching $1,022,000 for two bridges. Which is a significant cost. Which would be in the last, yeah, so...
And if the town had to pay 10% of that, that would be outrageous, a lot. That would be a lot, but I don't...
So, again, that's, that's up on the FEMA portal. Right now, there's permanent fixes are in.
I wonder who was talking about.
And, uh, excuse me, the temporary fixes are in using those state loan bridges. And the permanent fix, we put in as a placeholder for each of these bridges, one was 542 and the other one, I forget. So, approaching $1,000,000 for both bridges. So, I have thoughts about that, but it's up to the board again, whether or not... You, you don't even have to really think about that quite yet. Because you would have to go out to bids per our procurement policy and get at least three bids. So, right now, there's a placeholder there for $1,022,000, but don't even think about that.
It's hard not to.
None of that money has been expended nor probably will it ever be expended.
Yeah, just let me, so I have that number came available, cause Alfie had said he couldn't get people to, you know, engineers interested in doing the design for now. And when I talked with the Wolf Engineering about the rail trail, he said, "What about those bridges?" And I said, "Well, we'd love to have you take a look and give us an estimate on the design cost." And instead, we got this, which is good, cause we need a number.
Right, well, we got a design...
Right. We need a number. What?
We had a design cost also.
We did, where is that?
Uh, I don't know if it's, it's probably not in here.
From DeWolfe?
Yep.
Okay.
Just like 24,000, yeah, it was...
Is it in with this total here?
I didn't see it either, but...
I know there's an engineering, but I don't, anyway, it should be...
They have clearing and grubbing.
Maybe that was sent separately would be my guess.
I didn't see that one.
I think it was sent separately.
But anyways, this, we just needed a number, even, even though it might or might not be realistic.
So, we have a number.
Yeah. And then we'll go out to bid next spring.
Well...
Well, we gotta, we gotta, they haven't done the engineering yet.
Right, we'll go to bid for the engineering, for the design.
And so, what's wrong with the bridges that are there now?
Yeah, good question.
Good question.
Well, one big one is that they're not our bridges. They belong to the state and they are not gonna sell them to us. They're not gonna...
They won't.
They're not?
I've, I've asked them.
Oh, okay.
Cause I wanted, you know, I, I thought that myself. So, they're in place, why can't we just purchase it and go about our life? And they're like, "No, we're not. We don't wanna sell our bridges."
Bummer.
So, yes, no, that would've been great.
Oh, how much, I wonder how much they cost retail?
So, would it help if the select board sent a letter to the Department of Transportation, E-Trans and say, "Aye"?
For Forest and Parks, isn't the Forest and Parks that has those?
Well, so, here's another problem.
Opportunity.
Well, no, it's the, it's the abutments. The abutments are not suited for the next flood. And if we're gonna take this out of our own budget, then fine, we can take that risk. But if we're taking FEMA money, they're gonna wanna engineer, they're gonna wanna know that this isn't gonna happen the next time it rains. So, that's why the engineers get involved.
Sure. Lenny.
And Lenny, right. So, you know, those are two major problems that...
Then, there's another problem that this raises with FEMA. So, if you improve anything, which the improvements to these two bridges would be significant. You have to have an engineering study done. They have to come out and make sure what we're doing meets FEMA standards for mitigation. So, that's another...
Another Department of FEMA.
To FEMA, uh, it's very difficult to get something like this through FEMA without a lot of effort on our part. And that's okay, but effort on FEMA's part, FEMA part too. So, it's not as easy as just signing off. But anyhow, we should... Surely can't get those bridges off?
I've, I've asked. I can ask again. Or I can, I can find the, the, I have the manufacturer. I can see what, maybe we can buy our own bridge. I mean, there, there are other ways of fixing both of these bridges.
Yeah.
That doesn't have to cost...
A million dollars.
A million dollars.
That's what I figured, an engineer, design plan would, would give you, then options, right?
Well, no.
No?
I mean, it would. I mean, it would, but it's still going to be a million dollars, because the engineer is going to engineer it in a way that's going to last for the next hundred years. And then, and there's a lot of concrete, there's a lot of stuff in there. My thoughts are, we could do it a whole lot cheaper, but we're sort of taking a risk of, of the ability for it to last a hundred years or to last the next flood. I mean, I know I could go and build that bridge, so it will last. But will an engineer agree with that and sign off on it? So if we're going to do this without FEMA or without assistance, we could do it.
You really think any other engineer would, would come up with the same amount of money?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I mean, I, that's why we put it, we put it out to bid, you know. And I think when we were, when I was looking at engineers, they were like, their head was getting like this, because they were seeing all this work coming in. And they were like, oh, I don't know if I can do it.
Oh, just because of their on-time, yeah.
Nate, in particular, I mean, I really liked him, because he, he knows the area.
Who's that?
Uh, Nate.
Oh, right, okay, okay.
Temple, right?
Yeah, right. Nate, oh, no, Nate.
Nate, Nate.
Yeah. Ruggles Engineering, Nate Seacaret, right.
Yeah, Seacaret, yeah.
Because he already knows the area, so I was like... And the conversation that he and I had was more, we can fix this and do it, you know, cheaper.
But he couldn't do design work until next spring.
Wouldn't be able to do the design work until next spring.
So the next thing...
Where we are now, I can go back to him and say, hey, can we, can you put us a bid together for, or we bid on this engineering for us, and that'll be number two bid. This, this one will go for one bid, and then we can get him and one other. And so, yeah, we can probably do it cheaper. And every engineer is going to have a different idea of how to fix this. You know, same with mechanic has different ways of fixing a vehicle. So...
So if we approve this today, that's still an option. This is just going to hold the place. And then those cheaper options are still on the table. We're not taking them off by approving this, right?
We don't really have to, even have to approve it, because it's already a project that's in the, in the works and been working on it for months now. Carol?
You can't submit something through FEMA and then all of a sudden, after you do all this design work and get an engineer, and then pull back and say, no, we're going to do it our way? Which would be more money for the taxpayers.
Right.
Right, but we haven't, we haven't, we haven't gone through with any engineering yet. We've just got an estimate for the engineering. There's been no engineering done yet. None.
We still need to go to bid.
What's the twenty-four thousand? I thought that was a plan that DeWolf...
That's an estimate for the engineering.
To design.
They came out, right? They came out.
Yeah, but if that doesn't give you a design, that's just looking at it to see the scope of the work and to give you a estimate. There'll be, there'll be a stack of paper this tall with, with...
Just the estimate for the design.
Yes. So we're not anywhere near that.
So the bridges are safe?
Uh, I'd love to address that problem too. It is, my bridge is safe.
Carol, it's coming.
Oh, I, oh, I know, I know, but I just have to, I just have to roll out this problem that I know about. I had a friend who had a temporary bridge in the flooding and emergency vehicles refused to go across the bridge and his barn burned down, okay? So I am asking the select board to post or give me a sign to put up. I know your excavator was on there, so I don't know how many tons that is. I know that bridge is state-approved, but I need a sign.
That's an engineer.
That's an engineering thing? I can't get a posted sign?
I'm not going to put a sign there that says that it's good for...
Ten thousand pounds or twenty...
Or a hundred thousand pounds, because I, I haven't done the math. And that, somebody needs to do the math as to what those bridges will stand for weight.
Well, that's kind of an issue, in a way.
But you don't, somebody had, somebody had an issue, right?
Someone, yeah, a friend.
Yeah, but...
But what?
Other people in the same situation. I mean, how, how, is that an oddity? Or is that something that's happening all over the place?
I don't, I don't know. This is something I just heard that you said, ask the select board for a posted sign for weight. And that's one of them.
Really?
But if I can't, I mean, I'm sure the fire department would, they've come over my old bridge. And that was I-beams under that. So this bridge, it's got posts through it, but the boards are separating. So, yeah, when you take a look at the, putting those guardrails on, got to take a look at the bridge, it is separating a little bit. I don't know how it was planked together, but there's a hole.
It's not. There, there's, there's three...
Pieces with iron rods.
That are just setting together. They're not hooked together. The three panels that are four feet wide.
Yeah.
There are three of them setting, they're just setting together, they're not tied together.
Oh, they're not? Oh, okay, but there is...
The panels themselves, the, the boards that make up the four feet wide
Yeah.
are, are bolted together.
Okay, all right.
But the three panels that make up the twelve feet, they are not hooked together.
Okay, because I did see rod, I looked at it, I saw rods, but I did, I thought I went right through all of them. So, yeah.
Um, I might be able to call the state who owns them, and maybe they have a rating, a load rating for them. And then, and then we could maybe put some sort of sign saying what they're, you know... But like I said, that's generally an engineer that would make that determination as to what it would hold.
Wouldn't Paul Surrietti want to know that too? See if his, one of his pumpers can get over that on that word.
You would think so.
Yeah.
The state must know, right?
You have signs for them.
They may, they may. I can find out.
Because isn't that the whole point of them, is to run equipment across? Is that, that's why they have them, right?
Yeah, they're, they call them a skidder bridge.
Okay.
Yeah, skitters are pretty big.
Skidder bridge. So they, you know, they'll hold a skidder, they're going to hold a tank full of water. I wouldn't hesitate to put a ten-wheeler across it myself. That's just my own comfort level. The, the one, the bridge that's on Gynus's, that, there is no question about that. That thing will hold six trucks. And that thing is, is made for that. I will find out about the wooden bridge and see if, see if there's, the state may have a rating already. I mean, it's kind of... The state bailed us out, and I give them huge credit for that.
Yeah.
Because they, they just come get a bridge when we needed it. And it got us to where we are today.
Right.
With you being able to get in and out.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And, you know, so I'll ask them if they have more, a, a load rating and what they would feel comfortable with posting it at.
And then you want your contact Paul, seeing how much those trucks weigh?
Uh, you can, but I'm, I'm sure they're the same as a, you know, regular truck. You can find out, you can find out that from him, yeah.
Thanks, Paul.
Alfie, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
So number four, lastly. So the next, the next part of our FEMA project is going to include a lot of work inside the FEMA portal. And so Chris is now the alternate contact for the town of New York. I'd like that, I'd like that change to Danielle, because she and I will be working in that portal, uploading documents and answering questions and whatever else FEMA needs from the town to, you know, have them cut or sit check.
I, uh, make a motion that we appoint Danielle Rivelera as the second point of contact for FEMA.
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
And Chris was fine with that.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I don't blame him. So the second handout I gave you folks is an email I sent. So this, this is...
Next one.
This is in regards to the damage inventory. Okay, and what it does is it lays out on the second paragraph, with Town Highway in twenty, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four, bridge repairs, DeWolf estimates. Total estimated repairs cost is one million three hundred and forty-two thousand and change. FEMA payout of seventy-five percent of that. And then third paragraph, without the DeWolf bridges, repair costs just for the work Alfie has done, both temporary and permanent, and the permanent repairs that will be happening within the next year or so. FEMA payout of three hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty cents is the two hundred and fifty-six thousand. So fourth paragraph, I spoke with Andrew Flag, because I had seen that documentation regarding ninety percent or ninety-five percent. But I just wanted someone from emergency management to either confirm or not that ninety percent figure. So the body of his email indicates that we will be getting an extra twelve point five percent from the state. And again, that's as of today. Now, if the, anything happens and the president signs another declaration and we're able to get more money, even better. But for right now, for budgetary purposes, because I know your folks are going to be doing budgeting, the figure of two hundred and fifty-six thousand is what you should use. Unless you choose not to.
Okay, uh, let's see. So three hundred and forty-two one sixty-four is the cost of all the other work that's been done?
Absent the two, yes.
Right. But this one million three forty-two, does that include...
The bridges.
Oh, okay, oh, okay. Um, so there is also some money for the temporary bridges, right? That's in there somewhere, that's...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's in the three forty-two?
It's in the three forty-two one sixty-four eighty, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So...
So...
Three forty-two, so seventy-five percent of three forty-two is two fifty-six.
That's, that's what I came up with. Okay, so third page in your handout is that E-RAF summary. And this is what Andrew Flag quoted for the state's cost share. So the E-RAF rate as of last week.
E-RAF meaning?
Hold on, I did spell that out here. Emergency relief and assistance fund, E-RAF, is twelve point five percent. And other communities have larger E-RAF rates. Don't know how that happens. Maybe, I don't know, I might have got a speck of rain. So that's how you come up with that eighty-seven point five percent as of today. The other sheets are damage inventory worksheets. So these came directly from the FEMA portal. So you download the FEMA portal and it's a, it's in a dot CSV file, which is just all numbers and junk all together. Then you convert it into an Excel spreadsheet. So here's the Excel spreadsheet that's representative of all of the damage inventories that are now in the portal.
So there's...
So category B, temporary repairs. Category C of permanent repairs.
So there's eight different, um, damage inventories for the rail trail? Does that, like, include every fold?
B, C, B, C, B, C. Some are temporary, some are permanent.
Okay.
But that's okay. It's...
Oh, okay, I see, so there's one, okay.
So what they do, FEMA, is they categorize it by damage number. And you'll see the damage numbers are all...
Different?
Different numbers. So if you do forward, you'll see on the second page, number one three six zero six four three is the Town Highway twenty-four bridge. And you move down like four rows and there's the Town Highway twenty-three bridge. And there's the, if you go, you look at one three six zero six four eight, Town Highway twenty-three bridge, this is the B, which would be the temporary repairs for eight thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and change. So you just keep going and going.
What's category E?
Category E. Category E is for buildings. Okay, so that's probably the town offices that you're looking at.
Yeah.
Category E, that would be for buildings.
And the speed time. Is E also on it?
What's that?
The radar speed time?
Yeah, okay, buildings and equipment. So if you go down to the next to last sheet, and you go one, two, three, four, five rows, you see Cabot Road one, FEMA has actually assigned a project number to that. So...
Cabot Road...
Next to last sheet.
Okay. From Cabot Road one?
Cabot Road one, over to the right, is that seven thirty-six two hundred number?
Yeah.
So that's a project number that FEMA assigned to Cabot Road one. Don't ask me why they assigned that. I have no idea.
If they have also assigned all these other numbers on the left-hand?
They have not. That's the only project number they have assigned.
Wow.
So I wrote to FEMA and asked, why don't you assign a project for all the Cabot Road, Cabot Road?
Yeah.
One, excuse me, ten and twenty, so we don't have to make out so much paperwork. So I've not received a response from my email. And so we have to, I'm going to run, Danielle and I are going to run and fill out a project report for Cabot Road one for that ninety-three hundred and one dollars.
So at, at the last meeting, you said that, um, you couldn't continue uploading all your different pages that you have to until she applies the numbers? Assigns the numbers?
Different pages.
Different forms, like the force something, force equipment of count and I forget what they were called. They were, uh...
Force Equipment Summary, all that stuff, yes.
Yeah, all that stuff.
So those are like time sheets. Those are, um, equipment usage and materials. And that's all in another, those are three separate forms. And until a project number is assigned, you can't use any of those forms, because those are categorized by project numbers. So anyhow...
So it's still the same, okay, same place you were last year, last meeting.
Well, no, we have, we have a project number assigned, so we can move forward with that one project. But to me, that's not a good use of our time. Because Cabot Road ten and twenty, don't know why she assigned that. They're going to assign another project number to it, and we'll be just going through the same stuff. Anyhow, maybe I'll get a response. This week, I know she's on vacation, Michelle, our FEMA contact. Her boss is filling in, he must be busy, so anyhow. And in the last sheet, again, there's a, just a summary of FEMA portion of, with the bridges and without the bridges.
So I'm, I'm very impressed that you have all these numbers already. Pretty amazing.
Well, without Alfie saying, without, you know, Danielle's expert. Without, you know, Danielle's expert Excel spreadsheet work, you know, we would have, you know, the numbers would be as concise, and they are pretty much spot on. Because we took the time to sit down and say, okay, how much is six-inch minus cost per cubic yard? How much is ripper out cost? Stuff like that, yeah.
That stuff you only have to do once, and then, I mean, you know.
Well, Danielle's refining that now, moving it from an Excel spreadsheet onto PDF files. So, we can upload, and I'll show you what we have to do. Does everyone have something like this that says project on it?
Yeah.
In a separate, oh, yeah, right here.
You guys probably don't have that, because I only made three copies, four copies.
Do you want to look? I can overlook over Danielle's folder. If you'd like to follow it.
Oh, my God. Little squares and circles all over the place here.
So, this is looking right in the FEMA portal. So, every project, you're required to, number one, answer twenty-five questions.
This is why you're hoping to join the projects?
That's correct.
Okay, I can see why.
Yeah.
So, and, you know, I'm not gonna go through every question, but you have to answer before you even begin a project, twenty-five questions. And then, within the twenty-five questions, like, section two point one point one, regular hours the applicant is claiming, overtime hours, total costs for applicants and employees. So, there are some things you have to fill in. Once you say yes, then these things pop up, and you have to fill in that information. So, anything in the red box, you should move through on page three or five. Please describe the work, blah, 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 blah. Placing barricades for safety, blah, 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 blah. And then you answer, is there any sandbagging, refilling plugs, emergency pumping, search and rescue firefighting, blah, 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 blah. And moving smartly forward to question number twenty-four, and then twenty-four point one. So, that's just to get you started.
Wow.
On a project.
You guys have a lot of patience. Thank you.
Then the second page, or the last page, page four of four, so these are all the required documents.
Oh, my God.
So, every, every place you see a plus is a document. Diana, you were talking about force account, labor pay policy. So, they already have pay policy, they have the fringe benefit calculation, but they want you to add it again. Yeah, they have it as a separate document. They want to add it.
Wow.
And then the equipment summary, equipment rate costs, equipment record that Alfie's, you know, provided for us, material summary that Alfie provided for us, we all have those sheets, those sheets. But, we have to work on force account materials, invoices and receipts. So, I started on that today. Since they all have to be digitized and uploaded onto the FEMA portal, Brandy's bind which is about that thick, all has to be scanned and put on a flash drive. Then we have to correlate which invoice is for which project, which is for the project that we understand, but the project that FEMA assigns to it is different. It will be different. So, those are just some of the tasks that are now in front of us, now that all the damage inventories are done, and that milestone was met. Now, we have to get into the projects, and this is what FEMA requires for the projects.
Wow.
Ten years later.
No, this has to be done, once you, once they, once they make a project, you have thirty days to submit your stuff.
So, when you say make a project, that means they have assigned a number?
Yes.
So, they've only assigned us one number so far of all of our.
So, if next week they assign all these other numbers, then, yikes.
Trouble.
Yeah.
We'll have to have a special meeting just to do that.
Trouble. But you can always ask for an extension too. So, I talked to another gentleman in, in the state, and he said that some towns, you know, who are rich towns, and have staff, they have assigned their staff to do this.
Yeah.
Well, we have Skip.
Wait a minute.
We're getting by.
Yeah, Skip and Michelle. Excuse me, Skip and Danielle.
Many thanks to all three of you for all this work.
Yeah, Alfie's been right there with us. So, I have one more request. Okay, so, put on your memory caps. Back on, you slept over meeting on September twenty-fifth, that's when I first brought up the subject that I needed some help, and would you be willing to bring Danielle on to the project? And at that point in time, I thought that perhaps forty to sixty hours total would work. And so far, it has worked for phase one of the project, which is doing damage inventory. I believe if I already made a printout, Danielle has expended forty-two hours, so that's well within the forty to sixty hours. But, going forward, and so far, so that was for twenty-one hundred dollars that the town has paid Michelle, and so far, I've cost the town nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, for a total of like thirty-one hundred dollars. So, five percent, I did some more calculation, five percent of the, what was it, three hundred and fifty-two thousand is thirteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars. So, we have, and this, this is the thirteen thousand, that's what FEMA will pay the town for this add.
That's the category Z or something like that, yeah.
Category Z, yeah, five percent of the total cost. So, we've still have ten thousand dollars to expend, and I don't believe we'll even get close to an additional ten thousand dollars with the additional work. So, what I would ask the select board tonight is that we don't put our limit on the work that Danielle is doing. The select board consider to keep her on board as a consultant, and until this project is done. And, you know, the next two or three months is gonna be crazy with all the paperwork we have to do. But after that, it should drop off significantly.
You were the one that had concerns about that.
I mean, I think it makes sense. You've done a pretty good job of illustrating the amount of work that there is to do, so I think it makes sense.
It's all true.
Obvious. So, make a motion to, have whatever amount of time is needed.
Up until, up to, we won't exceed that five percent of the total for category Z. We won't do that.
Okay.
I will second that motion, Diana.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Um, can I go check on my kit real quick before we can keep going?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, you guys.
So, Alfie, you were late, so that's why we let Skip go first.
Sure, absolutely. He could've just took my plate.
What?
He could've just taken my plate.
I don't think so.
How'd you do on the rail trail? All done?
It is done.
Yeah?
Well, what I consider done, the other, the only other thing that we may wanna do is some sort of railings.
So, you haven't decided, did you put the stones there?
I didn't put stones. I did take care of, get rid of the berm, as the engineer requested. But with no berm there, it drops right off.
Yeah.
So, and it's plenty wide, so it's not, it's not that as an issue.
Yeah, but still.
But it's still a major drop off with no trees, no delineation or nothing, so. I was thinking of calling Steve Gray and see what his thoughts were about that, if maybe he could chip in to help with some sort of railing. That would suffice for snow machine travel. So, that's, that's sort of the only, the only other thing that I thought maybe we should do or look into. But it's, it's, all the culverts are fixed, the water is traveling the way it's supposed to, and the slides are, are careful. The excavator is still sitting there at the intersection of Buckley.
Yeah, I noticed that.
But that'll be going to the county road really soon, as our discussion just.
So, you don't think the rocks would make any sense?
Well, the engineer wrote a large email to me explaining the difference between a berm of soil versus a stone. Or a barricade, because that's what we recommended using.
Oh. Like barricades?
He wanted us to use barricades, like concrete.
Like Jersey barriers?
Jersey barriers, yeah. So, that to me doesn't make like a sense, because concrete's a lot heavier than that little bit of dirt.
Yeah, really. They could fall over the edge pretty fast.
Yeah, yeah. So, I honored his wishes by removing the berms. But I don't think that boulders are wise. Because if somebody leaves the trail, hits a boulder, it's gonna cause damage. And the town's gonna be on the hook. So, I think some sort of a fence or some, something like that with reflectivity on it is probably gonna be our best.
And they could probably do that installation themselves?
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask. I'm hoping they can. Because they would know what is suitable for snow machine travel and whatnot, so I'm gonna look into that. I'm gonna call Steve Gray and see what his offering is.
So, what's their total on that so far?
What have you done?
Yeah.
It's here somewhere.
Yeah. Thirty, forty, fifty, great.
Oh, the first sheet.
Sixty. Nine, ten, twenty.
Harvard Rail Trail, yeah.
Twenty-five.
First sheet.
It's like fifty-five hundred. That other estimate, that first estimate that we got, that was gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
Totally.
So, I don't have a calculator.
Twenty, twenty-five. So, twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. Twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-seven, like twenty-six. Yeah, twenty-eight, twenty-seven, something like that. So, the town's portion of that would be maybe three thousand dollars.
Whatever.
Not too bad.
Eighty-five percent, close.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven percent.
Eighty-seven point five.
Wait, I, yes, I keep thinking eighty-five.
So, here's another instance where FEMA better take into account that these half a dozen or eight line items are all through the rail trail. And not assign individual projects.
You don't wanna go through that little checklist for all eight of those?
Twenty-five.
You're driving crazy.
You're driving crazy, just looking at it. You're copying paste.
I don't know if they like that, but anyhow, you know, this should be just one project, and just be done with it.
Really?
Instead of trying to, well, we have quantified for rail trail section four, those costs individually. So, we do have that information, but just to spend the time to.
Every hole it was filled, just crazy.
But, you know, we do have that information. I just can't see making it more work than it needs to be.
Okay, anything else from you?
From me?
Yeah. Mister, Mister Point of Contact? Okay. Alfie? Oh, I'm sorry, when you were gone, I was asking him about the status of the rail trail.
I kinda, I caught the tail end, and I think I filled in enough to, I think I know what you guys are talking about.
Yeah, so, I'm gonna talk to Steve Gray about what he can offer for some sort of rail for protection.
He did say they were gonna commit ten thousand dollars, plus he was gonna try to get some from Vasa.
Yeah, well, when he was trying to convince us to fix it, he was, he was saying a lot more than that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but, as things. So, anyway, that's why I'm wondering if he can chip in a little for, if, if, not money, if he can, if he can.
Do it.
Do the installation. I mean, they've got manpower, and they've got, they've got funds to, to buy material, so. Other than that, we have been hauling sand, I'm trying to get that done in between other projects. So, we have had one truck that's been broke down, a ten-wheeler, and I'm hoping to get back that back tomorrow. It was almost done Thursday, but not quite. So, the one, the first morning that I went out to put salt on, the one ton almost left me stranded, the, it's the one we put salt on. And we just need to be thinking about that truck, because it's really, needs to be replaced or.
So, what other name do we call that by?
Five.
Thank you. And that's, that's not the Ford, is that the Ford?
Yeah.
The one we spent so much money on last year?
Yes.
The last two years.
We keep, we keep spending more money on it. It's not, you're never gonna get that money out of it. So, I'm suggesting that we do something with it really soon. And I know we just bought a grader last year, and this whole FEMA thing, it puts us in a, in a tight spot, but I really want you guys to be aware that that truck should not even be on the road. It's really not safe.
How are all the other trucks? Is that the worst one?
That's the worst one, yes, yes.
The next worst is the one we're trading in, right?
Yes, but that's the one that's been in the shop.
In the shop.
And so, they've done a bunch of repair to it, and hopefully coming back with a, say, inspection on it. So, they've gone through what it needs. And we have to rely on that truck, I'm gonna say, until mud season.
Really?
Before the new one comes.
No kidding, wow.
Because they, I talked to the body people, and they're not, it's not even going in their shop until December first. So, and then they want two months. So, that's, you know, might be a little bit before mud season, but I'm planning on that. So.
So.
I mean, the worst case, I can use the Low Pro for salt, it's more work, it's more time, but I would just have to dump the salt off and then put the sand on, just have to mix and clean out in between each product, each time. So, in emergency, that's what I would do. The other, the other problem that this would solve is we'd have a pickup to travel around and fix roads instead of paying me or Greg or whoever mileage to run their own truck. Which, you know, is another whole issue, the mileage we pay is not enough for, for, you know, for either anybody's truck for that matter. So I'm hoping that we can do something for a pickup fairly soon. Which we could put, you know, if we bought a pickup, we could put a box sander on the back of it with a plow. And that would do away with the five fifty completely.
So the five fifty is a pickup?
It is, it used to be a dump truck, but it's now just a flatbed with a sander in the back. Yeah, yeah, so.
So.
So that would alleviate.
Don't look at me. I am so in the hole right now. I'm going to have to go for, yeah, anyway, just, yeah.
Are the rest of the trucks in reasonable repair?
Yes, yeah, the rest of them are pretty decent.
You still using that really old one? The one that went over the bank and then got?
I have actually put that together.
Yeah.
In the event that we break, one breaks down.
Okay.
I still can put sand on with it. I can, I don't know if I dare put a plow on it, but there's one on it now. It'll be ready to go if we need to.
You couldn't use that for salt?
I think you could, I think you could, but you still are dumping it off every time. Because there's no cover on it. And the salt would just be in the body and it would just be, there's no room in the shop for it.
Yep.
This year, I'm going to have this loader in the shop. Whereas past years, it was not, it was left outside and plugged in. And then it wouldn't have to be left running.
Okay.
Before the hydraulics would work. And I'm not going to see that again.
So the grader and loader and two trucks?
No, the grader stays out.
Oh, the grader's going to stay out?
Yeah, because we don't hardly ever use it.
Oh, okay.
So that'll stay out. So there's two ten wheelers, the Low Pro and the loader will be inside. The salt truck, whichever that one will be, will be outside.
So have you started shopping for a new truck?
No.
Okay.
No.
Looking around, no?
I mean, I actually have been for myself because I don't like the truck that I have. I'm buying, I'm going to try to trade my own truck.
The one you just bought?
I've got an idea of what they cost, the one I just bought. I don't, I don't like it.
Oh, well.
But no, I wanted to run it by the board before I started. Like I said, I know we're in a position which we've spent a lot of money on a grader. And that would be messed up and I don't want to put us into a bad spot. But I also am responsible for the safety of the roads.
Right.
And I need to have equipment that'll run when I need it.
Well, we got away with the grader and the new truck without borrowing any money, so that's good, huh? But there's money out there. I wonder if, another thing I didn't ask Ben Rhodes, but when this money might start to flow from FEMA?
I'm thinking fiscal year 2020, June, what's that? June twenty, June 2024?
June, wow. Wow, really?
I'll have to go out for a loan before I can, I don't even have enough to pay appropriations.
Oh, geez, really? That's bad.
Not, not the five hundred dollar ones, the library, the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll be going out for a loan before then.
Who do we go through for loans? Is it a regular bank or?
Yeah.
Yeah. To get good interest rates?
Oh, yes.
Really, aren't you attending a seminar?
We are.
Next Thursday or this day?
Sixteenth.
Is that the one about budgeting during FEMA times or something like that?
Or, yes.
Yeah, great.
I eat at numbers if you instruct me to.
You might as well start shopping, I mean. We'll be working on our budget probably within the next month, so. Okay. I don't know what, how much it is that you have to do besides these reports that you give us, but you usually have a separate form.
We'll zero them out and we'll write in a new budget.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Once I have our half point.
I have a what?
Our half point, December's our six months in.
Oh, okay. Well, we're not going to wait until January to do our budget, right?
Well, no, it's an estimation.
Yeah, okay.
Another, another thing to think about is, I know when we're buying, when I used to buy big trucks for Callis, if you leased it, or not leased it, but if you took a loan for it, the payment, the first payment wouldn't come till the following year. So that might help us a little bit, I don't know if you're aware of that.
Yep, we have had different circumstances.
So that would buy us a whole year before a payment comes.
So we could put it in the next fiscal year, since it's not budgeted for this fiscal year.
Right.
That would be helpful.
Do you have to buy a new truck? I mean, aren't there some good used trucks out there?
From my experience, but from looking at my own trucks, a truck for myself, is that they're, they're almost the same amount of money. To buy, to buy something with, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand miles on it. And the warranty's gone. So when you buy new, you have a warranty, you have zero miles. Yes, I've been looking at a lot of trucks, so it's, you know, it's fresh on my mind. And that's a possibility, yes. But you run the risk of buying somebody else's problems.
Get you. We'll also be running the risk that we got three vehicles that would bring down all at the same time, she's buying them all at the same time.
Which is what happened with the two that we have.
Right, right. Which is sort of where we are with the two ten wheelers.
Right, brought them two within the same year.
You have any kind of ballpark idea of what this may cost?
What I'm seeing is probably around a hundred thousand. For a pickup, it's a pickup with a plow and a new sander in the back. Now, I say pickup, it's just.
It's a heavy duty, it's.
Yeah, it's like a three-quarter ton or a one-ton truck. Like the truck I drive around is.
Like it's like a six, is that a six wheeler or? Four, just four?
No, I mean, you could go with that, no, it would be, yeah, it would just be a regular single, single axel. Not dual wheels.
But we wouldn't need all the bells and whistles, like we wouldn't need to have seat warmers or?
Absolutely, in fact, I don't want that because it's just a problem down the road. You know, more electricity, more, more potential problem. So no, I don't, the truck that I'm looking at is, does not have bells and whistles, so I don't, I don't need it. You know, it is nice to have the electric window for the passenger. If you pull up to somebody, you like to be able to roll the window down and talk to them or whatever, but. Heated seats, electric mirrors, I don't need that, you know?
Sometimes you don't have a choice, though.
Backup camera.
Backup, I think they come pretty standard now with the back of cameras. I mean, a lot of that stuff is just standard equipment, you know, without the extra. Trucks have changed so much as far as purchasing them, they're just, they're adding more and more to it. So I will get, I'll get some numbers for that.
Well, I'm leaving and I am just totally amazed at how much work you've all done. I am just like, what you did or what you're doing is like, I hope you don't have to go home. I hope you go home.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll take care of it.
She doesn't want Skip to have to go into home.
Oh, into home, oh my goodness. So, okay, where were we? Fire alarm system, have you heard from that guy anymore?
Uh, I did have one more question for you, Alfie. I just wondered, the top of Old Quarry Road, did that ever get soft to any kind of?
They have not moved their stuff.
Nothing's moved, so you weren't able to finish the work going through there? Okay, and it's a little late now in the year.
I think we should just decide we're not going to do that.
Sure, yeah.
You know, I was thinking about that too, okay, you know, it's, I don't know, what, what does it matter?
I was going up Cabot Road the other night, it was dark out.
Yeah.
And that car was parked almost in the travel portion of the road.
Yeah.
With their high beams on.
I was thinking about the other one on the other side, that's kind of a snowmobile trail.
Yeah, down in, you know, the like Brian said, it is, it is a setting of presence. We've got to protect our right of way or we're going to just keep running into this all over town.
I've seen it starting in some other places, you've probably seen it too.
I've seen it over on, what's that road you live on, Skip?
Lake Hill.
Lake Hill, that guy has carved himself out a little parking space down out of the town right of way.
On the road, it shouldn't be, it's a both path road as it is.
Literally on the road.
Having two cars go by, let alone a park cars.
But they have sufficient room, they park their cars sometimes up in their driveway.
It'd be nice if they used their driveway.
Yeah.
I'm sure in the wintertime they'll do, they'll park up there.
Yeah, but he's car, because he's made himself a little.
They're still doing construction, right, they've still got machines there?
No, they're done.
They're done?
Yeah, that's another thing, next time we see it.
It shouldn't have been even so.
Yeah, they did, they said they were going to live there, they said they, a shed and a garage, yeah. So waiting for something from our attorney. Richie billed us for, but I haven't got anything yet.
Don't send him the check.
Oh God, we did approve it, though. Okay, so, okay, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good. So I don't have a whole lot, the last email chain that came through about the fire alarm. Rusty had wondered about, I don't know the term, I'm going to screw it up. It's a purchasing thing, I had asked you and Diana in the email. It's like a tax exempt.
Was a tax, yeah.
Something, some form.
Town, a tax exempt number?
Yeah, so I had kind of shot that back to both of you guys, thinking that you would be familiar with whether there's a form or?
Brandy and, they have the numbers.
Me? Oh, you, okay, and I don't know if you were on that email chain, so it maybe didn't make its way to the right person.
So I can bounce you our EIN number.
Okay, that'd be, is it just a number, there's not a form or anything?
There is a, there is a.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can scan that and send it to you.
Okay, that'd be awesome. And then the other piece of that is, I have asked Rusty now like three times, because when we initially started talking, he said he was going to double check if the quote was still good, but he had to check with their estimator on the panel. And I keep asking if he's gotten an answer and I keep not hearing whether or not he has, so. I guess when I come back to him with the EIN number, I will ask again about that.
Yeah.
But they're ready to do the work, so, you know.
So we did have twelve thousand dollars budgeted and he did, his estimate was ten.
Yeah.
So it has to, you know, it has to be more.
Right, right.
Has to be more.
Yeah, I mean, he seemed to think that, he said in the original email that the only thing that would have changed significantly was the panel. So I don't know how much those go for, I should probably just ask Tim.
Well, I was going to say, yeah.
I saw an email just recently where he was trying to schedule it to do over vacation.
Yeah, he's talking about scheduling, he just hasn't come back to me with the one thing, the money piece.
Yes.
But yeah, they're looking to start, I think, over Thanksgiving vacation.
Somebody asked, probably Broshu asked, whoever's over here, Monique or whatever, when would be good times? They responded with, you know, the times that the school's going to be closed.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's that.
So, okay. Okay, so we got the emergency management thing, the antenna installation taken care of. We do have to have some budget meetings. Near, you know, maybe, I don't know, should we wait until after our next elect board meeting or? Well, see what Chris has to say, I guess. And I just threw out here, if anybody out there cares about our town buildings and wants to contribute some, some expertise, as either an architect or a person who understands building systems or contractor who would like to be hired by the town to manage a couple of projects, we would really appreciate it.
Hired by the town?
Yeah, why not?
We've spent a lot of money, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, but we've got money, we've got money coming in for the.
Oh, these are just simply FEMA projects we're talking about?
Well, not necessarily, I mean, we need to know, we don't get any FEMA money for the town hall, but it would be nice. There is money available, it would be, but, you know, getting the money is not as much of a problem as getting the work done and the design and doing the right thing and hiring the contractors and things like that. Because that program that Regional Planning Commission is offering, if they're, if they're just talking about helping us get grants, you know, that's the easy part. So if we had somebody in town who was interested in working on buildings and helping the town, that would be nice.
But we're talking about hiring them with money that's coming from a grant?
Yeah.
Not with tax dollars?
Yeah, would depend, you know, all the things, a bunch of different things that have to be done at the town office. And whether those, I mean, nice to just have some, and we used to have people that did that. We had Grady, we had Richard Patton, we had Peter Pelts, we had, yeah.
I did a project plan for this place.
Yeah, why? Yeah, there was a whole, a whole bunch of people that worked on that, yeah.
But I can't do a project plan, no?
No.
Because they're too busy circling little things on the FEMA website.
For this one project, there are thirty-two questions and twelve documents.
So.
But I have that old project plan I could get to send.
So anyways, yeah, I just don't know where else to go with that unless we can find somebody. We could actually advertise for somebody to.
I feel like, so, I don't know that we've really talked about that enough to be at the point of advertising for somebody. Like, I'm not totally clear on what we actually want to do.
Right, well, that's, yeah, that's true.
And how necessary it is, right.
We don't have a plan, I would like to see, like I said before, as far as the town office goes, this is an opportunity to be proactive and not just replace what was there before, but maybe a little better. So that we can have some more office space down in the cellar in case we get a reappraisal contractor who needs a place to set up for a while. But you can't just, you know, it's more than just replacing the sheetrock. It's, whether or not to put in a new heating system that the, that the, insurance seems to want to cover and what now, and anyways. You probably know a lot more than that, than I. You probably know a lot more than that, but than, than I do.
I'm not a heating expert by any means, um, yeah, I don't know, I think if we were going to talk about hiring someone, though, like, we should have a, at least a good understanding of what we're all looking to do, right?
Well.
Like on both buildings?
We need somebody to tell us what we need to do, or give us some ideas of what we should do, you know, but.
Okay.
Anyways, yeah, you're probably not ready, I just wanted to throw that out there, so just in case somebody's interested. Uh, most of the, we, we have any like semi-retired contractor types in town?
McCannon.
What?
Rick Cannon.
I thought of Rick too. He's a carpenter, yeah.
What about the League of Cities and Towns, do they have anyone in their organization that could do like a, this may be the wrong term, proof of concept, conceptualize what you want to do to the town offices and have them draw up some sort of basic plan, and then you could work with that, and say, this is our concept, and move forward with.
You said the League of Cities and Towns?
Yeah. They may, you know, that's, that's one place to look.
Well, the Regional Planning Commission too, they keep offering help, but I don't think they have the kind of help we need, but.
Conception wise.
Right. We need an architect is what we need, but.
Yeah.
Hate to spend half of that money on an architect.
I mean, it seems early to talk about an architect, I feel like we should just go in there and think about what needs to happen first, you know?
Well, you know, yeah, okay.
But that's just my opinion.
Yeah. Well, we could do that, too. Got a new phone?
I'm watching football.
Oh. Yeah, that's right, my favorite show comes on at nine o'clock, Maine Cabin Masters.
Maybe that could work.
Maybe I'll even. Okay, so there really isn't any, um, anything to report on the reappraisal, I had to put that on the same line as this because I wanted to keep it all on one page. But John Reed and I have been looking at some information that was provided by the state tax department and when he gets back from his recent trip to take care of grandchildren, we'll get together. Anybody else who wants to participate in that, we'll certainly need more people by the time we get proposals to look at. But as far as requesting proposals, I don't think we need a huge team for that.
Shouldn't the listers be involved in that?
Yeah, yeah, they should be doing it, so, yeah, so tell them.
I will.
Good luck, good luck, they're halfway walking out the door now, so. But they certainly will have input on who to choose because they know more about that. Anything else? No, don't you know a German? Want a German?
That's a turn.
Okay. A turn, eight oh two.